Is yours, okay? I'm sorry, I don't see you.
I mean, I can read it.
Uh-oh. Listen up, guys, they got us.
The latest meeting of Columbia County Board of Commissioners to order for this Tuesday, October the 3rd, 2017. This time, I'd like to ask our vice chair Doug Duncan to offer up our invocation.
Thank you. Please pray with me. Gracious heavenly Father, we just come before you today with bad hearts with what happened in Las Vegas. Pray for those families who are badly affected by the mass shooting. Father, pray that you give them peace. Pray that you be with them through this difficult time. Even make them numb just to get them through it because frankly, I don't even know how to pray for them. Lord, we just lift them up to you and pray that you'd be with them. Pray now that you would bless the, bless our conversation, decisions made, and all glorify the Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, God, visible, free, just, proud.
We're worried about Billy Clayton.
We do have a quorum tonight with all five commissioners present. Gentlemen, if you've seen the minutes of our September the 19th meeting, second motion for their approval.
So moved.
Any items needing clarification? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Mr. Johnson, I believe we have one item to add. I don't know whether to call it Evans on Ice or Augusta on Ice because it seemed to be taking place in both locations, but do you have anything other than that item?
That'd be the only item I had, Mr. Chairman.
I guess we'll go with it at items added at the meeting.
Okay.
We'll get to it after the debate agenda. Well, again, I'd like to welcome each of the this meeting of the Commission. Remind you that these proceedings are videotaped. If you'd like a copy of the tape, you may obtain one through the Commission office. And remind you too, that they're on the county website in a couple of days. And also that if you're, would like to speak to this body and not already on the agenda, we ask that you fill out a speaker card in the back and bring it up to our county clerk and we'll recognize you at the proper time during the meeting. We do have a couple of presentations. I have one special recognition, and I don't really know why, but our state representative Jody Lott is with us. Good night, Jody. Welcome to this, uh, this meeting. Glad, always glad to have you here. And any of your cohorts, if you see any of them anytime. We have a proclamation for a longtime radio personality. Mr. Duncan, you want to go ahead and, and read that? I don't know if Mr. Drew was supposed to be here or not.
Was, but he's not, so. Read it from here or go out front?
Wherever you feel more comfortable.
I'll read it from here. This is a proclamation for Mr. Harley Drew. Whereas Mr. Harley Drew was born at Fort Gordon, Georgia, and is called Waynesboro, Georgia, home for many years. And whereas he has been interested in radio since age nine, began working in the industry at WBRO in Waynesboro at 14-years-old. And whereas Mr. Drew attended George Tech upon graduating from high school, but missed radio and moved back to Augusta in 1962 to assist with putting WFNL on the air. And whereas he was hired as program director of WBBQ in 1964, held that position until 1989. And whereas Mr. Drew joined Beasley Broadcasting Group in 1995 as operations director for WGAC, WGOR, WRDW, is the recipient of the Augusta's Best Radio Personality Award, has received numerous national awards for programming excellence, excellence. And whereas he was the anchor of Augusta's Morning News for WGAC. And whereas Mr. Drew was founding member of the George Radio Hall of Fame and served as vice president, he was inducted into the Radio Hall of Fame in 2011. Now therefore, we, the Board of Commissioners of Columbia County, do celebrate Mr. Harley Drew and recognize his accomplishments in the clear September 29th, 2017 Harley Drew Day in Columbia County, Georgia, thine seal this day on the 29th of September, 2017, Commission. But this was his last day of work. That's why we have it as 29th. Harley couldn't be with us, but.
Certainly been a mainstay of Augusta radio since I can recall, and a really nice guy. Always easy to get along with, very considerate. Of course, times change and people change and people come and go. He was really a good one. We have a request now from Marlena Bergeron to come address the Commission.
How's that?
Perfect.
All right. Marlena Bergeron, 2545 Willow Creek Court in Evans. And I first and foremost want to thank you for allowing the public to weigh in. That is such a part of celebrating our democracy and we appreciate it. I might need six minutes. Can I have six minutes instead of five? All right. I also want you Commissioners-
Five and a half.
Five and a half. That's sold, American. So, I really appreciate everything you all do because I have a hard time keeping up with a lot of the projects that I care about that affect me directly. And I can only imagine what it's like to be in your shoes with projects piling on your lap all the time. You have to read them, you have to review them, you have to predict outcomes, successes and failures, and safeguard the community. And I really appreciate you. I include you on my prayer list. You're after victims of hurricanes and earthquakes and oppression and random acts of violence, but you are on it because you are the gatekeepers of this county and you love it as much, if not more than any of us. And you know there's a reason why people from all over the world, whether they're botanists or triathletes, come here. But you also know that you are on the cusp of Columbia County's economic ship coming in and you have to balance the economic development with the environmental preservation. And I want to challenge you every day that there is a way to do that. Those goals can be inclusive with a lot of teamwork and a little innovation. I also have been synthesizing a lot of the feelings behind a lot of the facts and a lot of the facets of a lot of these projects. There are so many great things going on, but I want to mark some of the feelings that have been brought up. And I am on several boards, the Wheel Movement, Bicycle Advocacy and Accessibility Group, as well as the Library Boards, the Volunteer with the Friends of the Uchi Creek Greenway. I also want to know that Jody Lott is a member of our Friends of the Uchi Creek Greenway movement, so that's exciting. And all these things put together, I am here not on behalf of any of those, but as an individual. And I'm here for people who have just felt like things moved quickly and their, the things they cared about were put on the altar of progress. I also want to speak on behalf of the child who might, maybe cried when they saw that Phase Two for Mitchell Park was cleared. And I, not to say that we can't be adults about things, there's a lot of gray between the black and white, but I think it's important to mark those feelings because kids are learning things in school that they might not be seeing the county do in practice. So without further ado, I am sharing the first stanza of something I've put together called an Arbor Appeal. I recently saw a musical back in my hometown. It was about the founding fathers and some of the goals they jotted down. I thought about our issues here and what we still might do. Traditional methods for me have reached a wall. Maybe dropping some hot verse will cut through. Now, this might not be your thing, but your kids are gonna love it, I guarantee. So, about a year ago, I stood before you, begging on behalf of the trees. They hold the soil, they clean the air, they give us music in the breeze, they house the birds, they feed the bugs, they give us shade under shiny leaves. And here we are today with so much construction underway. Subdivisions, road expansions, business chains, parking lots. Everything except the greenway! That's okay. Things of value take a little time, but I am quickly losing patience when everything else pops up overnight. We have a plan. We've talked a lot of talk, but we still have no bike path. My kingdom for a sidewalk. I am talking about something between Columbia and Washington along William Few Parkway. Something connects the schools, the parks, the churches, the homes that are just a bike ride away. I also, for now, want to consider letting the Uchi Creek portion go. Too much backbiting, too many backyards divided, enough reasonable people saying, "Whoa, hold on, please." No. This land ought to be revered. It ought to be preserved. What a slice of Eden we live in. Interconnected and established ecosystems ought not to be disturbed. Let's enhance what we've already developed. Let's put some color on the concrete. Let's secure what is left of our green bubble and let's get to know it and to love it with our own hands and our own feet. Thank you all very much. I'll see you in two weeks.
Right on time, very good.
Perfect timing, now. Thank you.
Marlena is deeply involved in our green space and other items in Columbia County. Gentlemen, we go now to our consent agenda. This is our list of items that's been through the proper committee and received the necessary three votes to be put on consent. If you're satisfied with this list, we will accept a motion for their approval as one vote.
Second.
Any items needing clarification? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Going out of debate, I believe we start out with Commissioner Morris.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Pleasure to read this. I tabled it and put it off. Think we found it comfortable. I make a motion to accept the proposal from Vision, redesign of the county website and implement a county mobile application at a cost not to exceed $250,000. Authorize the chairman to execute appropriate documents, transaction, transferring the requested funds from allocated general fund to line code 1 dot 1 0 0.
Second.
Mr. Johnson, I believe this is considerably less than we started out in looking at this, and I think the staff has made considerable study and some trips to give us a little bit of background on where we are and why are we so excited about this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, we were able to come to this decision after a lot of looking at different places and different websites and different mobile applications. I really want to commend our staff, particularly Cassidy and Ian, for the hard work that they put into this, this process. And we've involved all of our technical people and really, it's been a countywide vision. The, the idea behind this is, is the county is desperately in need, I think, of this mobile application. As you know, Columbia County is a trendsetter in many areas. We will be one of the fir-, we will be the first government to have an app of this kind and to be developed just for Columbia County. At the same time, we'll be doing a whole redesign of our website and we'll be depending on the talent of our staff to be working with, with our vendor to, to give us a, a really state-of-the-art website. This is considerably less than one of the other proposals that we had. We were concerned that maybe we were not going to get the product that we wanted for that, but we've been assured that this is, our longtime vendors, what they're really trying to do is they're really trying to keep our business and they want to go forth with Columbia County and be on the cutting edge. So they're willing to partner with us and reduce their design fees to partner with us to accomplish something that they've been wanting to accomplish for a long time as well. So hopefully, we'll be able to get there together. But we do have the timeline in place. This will be a fast process. If we execute the contract, we will move out immediately and hopefully, right around the first of the year, well, after the first of the year, we'll start rolling out some, some really neat and engaging things for our citizens.
Questions or comments?
You did mention, after the first year, we will be getting regular, they are promising regular updates on the progress of the-
Absolutely. And, and we, we are working directly with the CEO of Vision. It's going to be very involved in this process. The CEO of a company called Class App is going to be involved. I'm going to be very involved in it. Mr. Kennedy's going to be very involved, really all of our staff in, in our office and all of IT. And then, of course, the people that are really kind of the brains behind the operation, Cassidy and Ian, we're gonna, we're gonna work through this thing. But absolutely, we'll, we, we have benchmarks along the way that we'll need to hit and we're gonna make sure we hit those.
Questions? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Mr. Richardson?
Motion. Second reading.
And this is just a, a fee schedule for different kind of plan reviews and pretty much an update in the, of that area?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
Comments? All in favor? Next item, please, sir.
Make a motion to allow the applicant to withdraw his request without prejudice for the change of conditions, tax map 0, 1, 0.
I believe, Mr. Johnson, this was involving MedNow and a sign problem and they have agreed to meet the present sign criteria.
That's my understanding, Mr. Chairman.
The comments? All in favor?
Make a motion to approve the rezoning for tax map 0, 9, 0, 0, 1P located off of John Deap Parkway currently zoned R1 and M2, industrial warehouse and just-
I believe that's pretty self-explanatory. Comments? All in favor?
I make a motion to approve the variance to section 90 dash 139 buffers and tax map 0, 9, 0, 0, 1P located off of John Deap Parkway currently zoned R1 and M2 buffers against residential owned property, north and south.
Does this have to do with the foreign trade zone as we've been in, in before, or are there no real residential areas close? The staff saw no problem with this request. Okay? All in favor?
I make a motion to disapprove the request to waive the fee for variance to section 90 dash 139.
Second.
Motion and a second. I believe the staff in situations like this do the same amount of work on these as any other request timewise. All in favor?
I make a motion to approve the rezoning for tax map 0, 8, 2, 102 located at 102 Bellwood Drive from R3 to P1 for a parking lot.
Second.
I believe it's, it's already a parking lot, isn't it?
Pictures look like it's a parking lot now.
This, this is the property that, uh, the couple actually bought. It was one that was abandoned because of the road project and we went through the abandonment process. And I think they were using it for that purpose, but this actually cleans it up and I think finishes it out for them. So hopefully, everything is, is done after this action tonight.
And I believe they're proposing to use some permeable surface to reduce the stormwater runoff?
That's your next item, if you approve it.
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
I make a motion to approve a variance to section 90 dash 133 parking for the tax map 0, 8, 2, 102 located at 102 Bellwood Drive to permit alternate material, pose parking lot.
Second.
And I believe this is something that we probably just need to and are kind of forced to look at on any, in a parking area.
Yes, sir. We have other examples in the county as well. The Golden Corral parking lot, they used a pervious surface. They use a pervious concrete instead, but we've done similar things in our parks. We're actually designing another park right now. They'll do a lot of this. Good thing for the environment.
It's a great example of what Ms. Bergeron was talking about earlier, about not so much concrete and stormwater runoff and using different materials and keeping it green and I think it's a good use.
I'd like to compliment our boys that did the parking lot over next to Evans Town Center Park on the dog run-in. Everybody that wants to water their lawn usually gets a 5/8 hose and connects it to a spigot and puts a little thing out that goes round and round. Our boys get a 3-inch fire hose with a fire nozzle connected to a fire hydrant that's got a pump mounted with it. Hey, you can't do anything with these guys.
We paid for every gallon, though.
Billy? All in favor?
I make a motion to approve a variance to section 90 dash 98 listed lot and structural requirements in section 90 dash 147 using tax map 0, 6, 9 located at 4776 Washington Road, not set back from the wideaway buffer requirements under section 90 dash 147.
I believe this is a, or a future condition to self-storage?
Correct.
All in favor? If it's okay with the Commission, I'd like to go ahead and do these property matters and then we'll come back to the added item. Mr. Richardson, if that's okay with you?
I make a motion to approve $39,038 Spring Lake's Community Association, parcel 48, $50,884 to Spring Lake's Community, parcel 55, and $18,000 to Robert E. Hamilton, parcel 72, paying right of way, and our easements for the Boeing Wells Road Binding Project.
A few more out of the way. Any discussion of these items?
Part of that.
All in favor?
I make a motion to approve $225,000 to Walter F. Teresinski, parcel 052, 12 located off of High Matters Drive for the Water Utility Campus.
Second.
I believe this is a good many acres. How many acres is that, Mr.?
Seventeen.
Seventeen?
Seventeen point oh eight.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Gentlemen, we'll go back. I don't think we have any legal matters that's been hidden unless this is one that we're gonna talk about.
Better it's a legal matter if you want.
This is a situation that I don't think we've faced before. And John Luton is the man, I think Rachel is here, been involved with this to bring a holiday event, Evans on Ice, Evans Town Center Park. I was contacted last Thursday for a meeting on Friday with the principles of this that first came in, that the county was not living up to their end of the bargain, and I think maybe there was several bit of misunderstandings, but as it always turns out, that's not all the story. I think there has been a bit of confusion about the 51-day alcohol sales. I think Columbia County's got a three-day temporary alcohol permit and I believe the state has a 10-day temporary alcohol permit. And we said we would follow the, the county ordinance, which was probably a, you know, not to their liking. Also, they brought forth that they would like to, rather than have it an open to the public during the holiday season, to put a fence around the, their portion of the event and charge a $5 admission fee, whereas we were under the impression that it would be free to anybody to walk through, but if they chose to ride something or use the ice skating rink, they had to pay for those events, correct? And then I think that there was a little bit of a issue with the vendors. We had an agreement, I think, to split the concessions 50/50. And we found out that they had gone to a lot of the vendors and requested a 15% surcharge that would go to them directly. I think they've sold a few tickets. I don't know how many sponsorships they got. Gentlemen, they brought to the meeting Friday, after talking about it for quite a while, the fact they would just like to be out of this, and they brought a suggested termination letter saying basically that the county can no longer accommodate contractor. Both contractor and vendor mutually agree. Both contractors and vendors mutually agree, as would cause undue hardship to either of both parties to continue to do business together. I don't know where that came from. I told them I could not sign that. I said, well, I believe, John, they said that they wanted to talk till the end of the day, and I said, well, it doesn't matter, end of the day, Monday, whatever you'd like to do. But before the end of the day, another one came through, and that was written by the same gentleman, that pretty much said basically the same thing, that no penalties, repercussions, legal cause of action, be confidential, nobody would be bad-mouthed in the dissolution of the contract. And then we found out, I guess yesterday, they had already contacted Richmond County to do it at the Commons, and I believe they went before the Commission down there today and got approval with details to be worked out. And I'm not, you know, I don't have any ill feelings about it, I do think, and I want to hear your, your comments, I do think we have an obligation for the people that bought tickets or bought sponsorships in from Columbia County expecting the event to be in Columbia County, that now to get their money's worth, they're going to have to go to Richmond County. I don't know how many of those are, I don't know how much is involved, but I believe, according to information we received, those tickets and those agreements were non-refundable, but location, you, you don't usually expect to change.
That was our understanding, Mr. Chairman, I, I don't know if they're going to honor that or not, but our understanding that it was non-refundable, and I believe there were a little over 100, I guess, season passes sold, right, a little over 100 season passes sold, and that was obviously thinking that the event was going to be held here. Again, we don't have any ill feelings towards them, hope, we hope that we could work it out, but I think it would be up to those citizens to decide whether or not they still wanted to make the trip from, from here to downtown. I think that is an issue.
Another item that we, I didn't mention was, we, I believe they had contacted some grading people that are going to have to have some grading done in the park to accommodate an exactly flat surface that was never discussed in the beginning. So, gentlemen, we've got a situation here that they have asked on multiple occasions to get some kind of agreement that we just agree to part company, but there's been an awful lot of deception and behind-the-scenes action, so what are your thoughts?
Now they're in Richmond County.
Probably still.
They'll probably be there a lot longer than they would have been here.
Reality is, has, does the county have investment in this?
Well, in, in committee, you know, that we talked about, that we thought we would probably spend, what, $10,000, we needed to repair the, the ground because you knew the grass was going to die even if you didn't do any grading. And then the problem of providing a 400 amp service from our pad mount back of Lady Eight, yes, is going to be laid across the, the ground. Do, do we have the cabling to do that?
We do, yes, sir, we've got quite a bit of cabling.
I don't know what that expense would be, and you're going to be running for 51 days of a very large chiller, and the thing that could be a problem is the weather, if it's unseasonably warm, the chiller is not going to be able to overcome a 55 or 60-degree day with the sun shining on it, but that was hopefully something they had already worked out. Now, a couple of our members, or maybe more, had the impression that this was an experienced group, the same group that did, that does the one in Greenville beside the Hilton Garden Inn. I believe Mr. Allen and both Mr. Richardson had that assumption, I never did really think about that, but that's not the case. This is a young couple, very nice people, I believe one from Seattle and one from Chicago, that wound up here because they have family at Savannah Lakes, thought this would be a good thing to put on, supposedly a half a million dollar version. How do you feel?
Have to take official action?
No, Mr. Driver has said there is no penalty, I guess, for not performing.
Well, I would say this, I would, I don't think that you have to agree tonight to terminate the contract and advise you not to. I would not be putting to terminate the contract tonight. If you don't vote to terminate the contract, it basically just says that if they default, they would have not defaulted yet, but it certainly seems like they're on their way.
But there are no penalties?
There's no penalties listed, no.
The record would just show that they were in breach of contract.
That's right. If there were monetary damages, I think there, there could be a pursuit of those, I don't know, it doesn't sound like there are, but if there were.
Other than our time, there's not any money involved?
I'd like to see that invested fees and passes or sponsorship, thinking that it was going to be here, or, or people of this community, that they, if they'd like, be able to receive a refund, really like it.
That's another potential reason not to terminate the contract now, is to figure out how that's going to play out and, you know, have any involvement in helping them with that, based on the fact that you currently have a contract.
John, do you or Rachel know any of the numbers of sponsorships, roughly 100 tickets or season passes, but has anyone bought the 50,000, 25,000, 15,000, or 10,000 sponsorship?
And I'm personally just looking for a reason not to let them go, so that's, what does it ultimately, ultimately matter?
I recommend we follow Council's suggestion and, and take no action at this time.
Take, take this as information, but take no action?
Mr. Chairman, if I might add.
Wait a minute, we've got a motion on this one.
Second. Thank you, sir. I have talked to staff today about what we could do, I think we were very excited about the, the possibility of having a family-friendly event here in Columbia County, and we are going to work hard in, in the next couple of days to try to come up with something very special for Evans Town Center Park for the month of December. Staff's got some really good ideas, we need to make sure we can accomplish what we've, what we think we have on the table, but, but our, our vision is to have a very family-friendly event run through the month of December that is free to our citizens, that'll be something that, that everybody will be very proud of, and it'll be something that we've not done before in Evans Town Center Park, so we're going to be working hard in the coming days to try to, to do that so we can have that nice Christmas event in our park.
Well, I agree with the staff, and during the holiday season, I don't think we should have changed the original agreement to allow their portion to be fenced and charge an admission fee, because that is the, the time at Thanksgiving through, through Christmas that a lot of people are in the park, there's other events going on, and I just don't think that was a good, a good thing to do, and again, I agree with y'all's decision and the letter you sent, that that would not be the thing to do. Do we have a motion and a second? All in favor? Okay. I think we have run through the agenda, unless someone has anything else to say?
I, I would just like to say, I appreciate the staff trying to get something put, put together for, for December, because I, I think there was some excitement out that there was going to be a, a activity like that. I know that they'll pull off something that'll be outstanding, I know it's a short, short time to get it done, but have all the confidence that they can, and I think the citizens are looking forward to something like that.
Any other business to come before this meeting of the Commission?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor? We are adjourned.
Yes, sir.